I'd like to call to order the August twenty-fourth, twenty-three meeting of Mayor Council. Like that is Mr. Ruben Vigil from Lighthouse Christian Fellowship Church in Lake Park coming up to lead us in prayer. And after that, we're gonna have Bill Sabino from West God, Chief Portier, Gate Highway Level, this church to lead us in the picture.
Yes, my friend. We're thankful for this day, the opportunity to come together. For our family, colleagues, to do your work, to do your will. But we pray that you give us discernment to judge well, give us wisdom to choose well, and God give us civility to work together. I pray, God, that Valdosta really become the city without limits. We're thankful, we love you, Jesus, know it, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republican British Science, one nation, on the God, in the Bible, with the liberty and justice for all.
All right, council here, time to read over the minutes for the August twenty-second meeting. Are any objections we'd like to? Who's those by acclamation? Next on the generally ever ordinance and resolution presented by our city manager for the military rate that they did not offer.
Thank you, Mayor Proten, Council. This is consideration of ordinance to establish the twenty-twenty-three military rate. The city of Valdosta has a history of maintaining a conservative military rate. The city adopts a budget each year that avoids relying on significant increases in the job digest in order to minimize the need for a military rate increase. The current military rate is seven point seven nine six. The computed rollback rate is six point nine four seven. The proposed military rate is six point nine four seven, as I stated, is the rollback rate. The rollback information is provided by the Lowndes County Tax Commission's Office to the city with the calculation already determined. Their current digest experienced a fifteen point nine percent total growth and a three point three real growth from last year. This year generated adequate revenues to fund the FY twenty-four budget at the rollback rate. A five-year history of the military rate must be published one week prior to the adoption of the new rate. This ad appeared in the Valdosta Daily Times on August the sixteenth, twenty-twenty-three. An ordinance with the military rate of six point nine four seven is attached. This is the rollback rate. Additionally, the attached military rate ordinance includes the assessment of five mils for property located in the central Valdosta development area. This is for the continued maintenance and operations of the central Valdosta area and must be approved by Mayor Council. Lastly, Mayor and Council must also approve the military set by the Valdosta City School System. They met on August the twenty-second, twenty-twenty-three to adopt the rollback rate of fourteen point zero six eight mils. Staff recommends Council approve the ordinance to adopt the new tax military rate of six point nine four seven, five additional mils for property located in the central Valdosta development area, and fourteen point zero six eight mils set by the Valdosta School System. As you look at the slide that's before you, it provides a breakdown of the reassessment, looking at the twenty-twenty-two digest, the other, and the twenty-twenty-three digest. As you can see, the reassessment had growth of two hundred and five mil, four hundred and thirty-three thousand, seven hundred and thirty-six. Bringing the twenty-twenty-three digest to one billion, five hundred and sixty-eight, six hundred and eighty thousand, and three hundred and fifty-three dollars. As I stated earlier, the net digest is one billion, eight hundred and eighty-six dollars, five hundred and seventy-four, three eight seven. Requesting that Council approve the military rate of six nine five seven as outlined.
All right, we're gonna turn this over to Mayor Kathy, any questions?
Yes, I have a question. I was hearing you when you were talking about the CVD. You know, we said that the CVD, we said it was an amount that we was allocating for them to five point five?
Five mils, yes, ma'am.
Okay, didn't they come up here about a couple of meetings ago and they were making some changes and adjustments that they wanted to set aside before so that we could look at that and approve it? Would this affect that?
It will not affect the mils, it'll affect the proposal that they will come back and present.
Okay, 'cause, okay, you see, it won't affect the, this mils is already determined.
The five mils is already outlined, yes.
So we're voting for the rollback to remain, right?
Yes, ma'am.
Any other questions? Right, thirty's old, the council?
Mr. Mayor Proten, I'd like to make a motion to approve the rollback rate of six point nine four seven for the city of Valdosta, the five additional mils for properties located within the CVD area, and for the Valdosta City Schools, the military rate of fourteen point oh six eight mils.
Second. Is the motion in second, all in favor?
I sh-
All opposed? It's all, are they unanimous?
It is. I always knew you.
All right, we're gonna move on to the consideration for the resolution for the private sale of Mathis City Auditorium at the renegotiated price.
Yes, Mathis is a multipurpose civic facility with an auditorium, having a total gross building area of thirty-one thousand square feet. The partial land, which is six point nine seven five acres in size, and it's located at twenty-three hundred North Ashley Street. It is over fifty-five years old, becoming outdated, and is the facility also antiquated and really cannot meet the daily needs that we need to provide our citizens. South Georgia Medical Center has a need for future growth and economic development as they are the largest non-government employer in Valdosta, and their plan to expansion will provide a full campus for future growth. This real estate matter was discussed with the Mayor Council in recent executive sessions. On May the seventeenth, twenty-twenty-three, Almond and Company conducted an inspection and appraisal of Mathis to determine the property value. The appraisal stated the value of the property and the building is two million, five hundred and fifty thousand dollars. The city has been working with South Georgia Medical Center, hospital staff, and the board of directors to secure ownership of the land and structure from the city at that negotiated fee, at the negotiated fee of two million, five hundred and fifty thousand, fifty-five thousand dollars. The city does not have an ordinance, but there is a provision in the charter, section nine dash twelve, that states the following. When the Mayor and Council propose to dispose of real property by private sale, it shall in regular council meeting adopt a resolution for authorizing an appropriate city official to dispose of the property by private sale at a negotiated price. The resolution or order shall identify the real property to be sold, but need not specify a minimum price. The resolution or order shall also be published once after its adoption, and no sale shall be constipated until ten days after its publication. A tax review review is a resolution authorizing the city manager to sell the property. If approved, the city clerk will then advertise one time in the local newspaper. After a ten-day waiting period, the city manager will then proceed with the sale of the property. Staff recommends following this required advertisement, approve the recommendation for sale of the property as outlined for the negotiated fee of two million, five hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
All right, we're gonna turn this over to Council for action.
Mayor.
I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
May I motion to approve the resolution for the private sale?
Second. The motion is second, all in favor? Well, anybody with any discussion? All in favor?
I just, you know, you make sure that we say we're gonna advertise this, you're gonna want us a chance to purchase this property if, you know, higher, if they wanna go higher, we would be negotiating with them. So they might have bought it at the price that we set here, correct?
No, ma'am, this right here, we've already negotiated the price, and the hospital has agreed with that price. Right now, Council will approve the city manager to approve after ten days, the resolution has been advertised.
It's done. Any other questions?
No, thank you.
The motion is second, all in favor? All opposed? All right, we're gonna move on for consideration of a request from the Valdosta Lowndes County Airport Authority to approve a resolution authorizing acceptance of a contract with Georgia Department of Transportation.
Yes, yes. The Valdosta Lowndes County Airport Authority desires proceed with the design of a new general aviation terminal and design of reconfiguration of the general aviation park at the Valdosta Regional Airport. The Federal Aviation Administration has offered to fund ninety percent of the allowable cost, which is approximately seventy-eight percent of the total value. There will be no city of Valdosta funds required for these projects. The remaining amount will be funded partially by the Airport Authority from SQUOS, eight funds through Lowndes County. The Georgia Department of Transportation is preparing a contract to match five percent of federal grant funds for these projects in an amount not expected to exceed thirty-five thousand dollars. A resolution has been prepared authorizing Mayor Scott Mathison to accept the contract in order to process the documents. Staff recommends approval of the resolution authorizing the mayor to accept the contract from GDOT for the airport projects.
All right, I'm gonna turn this one over to Council, any questions?
I don't have any question, but I would let our city manager to repeat again that it's just no cost from the city for the citizens to hear this.
There will be no city of Valdosta funds required for these projects.
That was all because the citizens need to hear this loudly and clearly that it is no cost from the city of Valdosta.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, sir.
Any other coming? All right, I'm turning over to action.
May I make the motion to approve the resolution for the mayor to accept the contract from the Georgia Department of Transportation?
Second. The motion is second, all in favor? All opposed? All right, eyes carried. Now move on with the next consideration for the Valdosta Lowndes County Airport Authority to approve a resolution authorizing acceptance of a contract from Georgia Department of Transportation proceed with the construction of a new air traffic control tower.
Yes, sir. The Valdosta Lowndes County Airport Authority desires to proceed with the construction of a new air traffic control tower. There are various sources of funding for this project that includes the Transportation Investment Act funds, the bipartisan infrastructure law funds, the Airport Authority funds, and the Georgia Department of Transportation GDOT funds. GDOT has offered limited participation in the amount of five hundred thousand dollars. There will be no city of Valdosta funds required for this project also. GDOT is preparing a contract in the amount of five hundred thousand, partially to partially fund construction of the new air traffic control tower. A resolution has been prepared authorizing Mayor Scott James Mathison to accept the contract in order to process this document. Staff recommends approval of the resolution authorizing the mayor to accept the contract from GDOT for the new air traffic control tower at the Valdosta Regional Airport.
After he ends, are there any questions? I'm turning over to Council back.
Mr. Mayor Proten, I'd like to approve the resolution as stated.
The motion is second, all in favor? Eyes carried, unanimous? We're gonna move on.
Ma'am, excuse me, excuse me, Mayor Proten, I know if I'm out of order, I just, before we move to the next session, Mr. Tryton, you can tell me, I had a question here, and my question was still about the ordinance for the military rate. I did say question, I think I said it too late. I just heard in the motion, I just wanna get this clear, that we said we're gonna approve them, we're gonna approve the request for the military rate with an additional five point five for CVD. I did hear him say additional, and I'm trying to make sure that's not any extra, remember I asked about it, but we need to clear that up, that it will not increase anything, that it will be not any extra cost.
It will not, ma'am, it's what it is right now, we allocate five mils to the central development authority, so all we're saying is we're still offering the five mils to them.
I hear that, I just wanna clear, I heard it said additional, and I'm thinking that's something that we're gonna be doing, and it was a question, I know they did come and ask for something, and I just wanna make sure we, I'm gonna continue with the amount that we have been doing in the past.
Right, and it's the same as for the, as the school system.
They do pay a five, additional five mils. They pay the regular military rate plus an extra five mils.
Is that CID thing, that's something that I think downtown pay or something?
It pays for Main Street, is really what it does.
Just trying to make sure that military rate doesn't go. Thank you.
All right, we're gonna move on with bids, contracts, and agreements and expenditures. City to Mayor, Beano Down, here to present.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. This is a consideration of bid for the Baytree Road and Gonto Road intersection signal improvements project. This was a TIA project. As you're all aware, the arrangement that we entered into with GDOT was part of the Transportation Bus Mac back in twenty-twenty. The total private budget as a term for this project was two point seven three four million dollars. The design was completed for under a quarter million dollars. We held the mandatory pre-bid meeting, and we had two attendees. Unfortunately, we only received one bid, but as a positive note, that bid came in well on the budget at one million, one hundred sixty-two thousand, nine hundred fifty-two dollars. We incorporated a ten percent contingency for unknown field conditions, which brings the total project cost to one point two seven nine million, two hundred forty-seven dollars and twenty cents, which is well within the remaining budget for the allocated TIA funds for this project. Staff is recommending approval of the bid. It is responsive and responsible, and I'm here to answer any questions that you may have.
Any questions, B?
I do wanna clarify on this project, that the strain poles, the large concrete poles which hold up the signals, those poles have a very long lead time, so once you approve this project, there will be a nine to twelve month delay before construction begins, but I just wanted to be transparent now so that you don't see the delays and wonder what's going on, so. Any questions?
Well, these, the improvements, can you explain, I mean, I know it's a signal improvements or whatever, but exactly, are they getting rid of the overhanging wires, are they getting rid of all that?
So, we considered doing cantilever arms on the intersection, and it was gonna be cost prohibitive because of the base, and if you're familiar with the intersection now, we've got some pretty substantial power, Georgia Power Infrastructure that runs through and along this intersection. And so for that reason, strain poles, which, trying to think of a good example of an intersection with strain pole construction, but they're large, heavy concrete or steel poles which are anchored to the ground, and they're not required to be supported by guy wires, so they don't have the back support wires that normal wooden poles do. You know, utilized in situations like this where rattleways very narrow, and that's a constraint for the design of the project, so that we don't have to purchase additional rattleway to anchor the guy wires. So there still will be crossing wires there, but the main focus of this intersection improvement was for a signalization study and analysis in the intersection to improve the efficiency of it. There was some additional construction of a right turn drop lane as you're traveling southbound on Gonto for travelers wishing to turn westward onto Baytree toward the Grove Apartments, I believe is what. And that was because of the signalization study that analysis showed that there's very substantial delays in that right turn lane for people that predominantly wanted to turn right onto Baytree. So, I hope that answers your question. There's still, there will still be wire suspended signals on this project, but the strain poles will be an improvement.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions?
Questions for B?
So the traffic a little bit, you feel, smoothly right over here?
Yes, and this, this project was selected and is being performed in tandem with intersection improvements on St. Augustine at Gonto, as well as St. Augustine at Norman, so we're hoping to see some pretty substantive improvement in traffic flow in and around the mall area as a result of this project, as well as that separate TIA project. So.
All right, thank you, B.
Thank you.
Council, is yours back?
May I make a motion to approve the bid as stated?
Second. The motion is second, all in favor? All right, eyes carried unanimously. Are we gonna go ahead with the consideration for new lighting from Valdosta Lowndes County Parks and Rec Authority at the main office gymnasium?
Yes, sir. The gymnasium at VLPRA main office is in need of new lighting to improve tournament play and reduce energy and repair costs. They obtained a quote for new LED lighting from Musco Sports Lighting in the amount of thirty-two thousand dollars. The quote was obtained under a source well contract. It includes equipment, design, layout of the system, and a ten-year warranty with on-site labor. The cost of the system would be partially covered by the American Rescue Plan Act, AWP allocation to VLPA, and the balance will come from SQUOS eight. As you recall, Council allocated two hundred and forty-five thousand from AWP to cover the basketball court floor at Mildred Hunter Center at our last council meeting, in the amount of two hundred and twenty-five thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars, leaving nineteen thousand, seven hundred and fifty to cover the lighting system. This means that twelve thousand, two hundred and fifty will need to come from SQUOS eight. Staff recommends approval of the Musco Sports Lighting in the amount of thirty-two thousand dollars with nineteen thousand, seven hundred and fifty funded from AWP, and the balance twelve thousand, two hundred and fifty will be funded from SQUOS eight.
First, when we talked about that at the meeting, when they said it, it's my understanding, and I thought they would be here some of the representatives of that, that that lighting, you know, funding for lighting was gonna be used for the Mildred Hunter Center. Remember, we talked about it, and they said what we were gonna do for the basketball floor, and we had, what, twelve or eleven thousand or something else that could be used for lighting, and if we needed any other money for the lighting, because we need some lighting over there at Mildred Hunter Center. And it was, maybe I was lit, I probably misunderstood it, but it's my understanding, they were gonna use that funding for lighting for lighting for Mildred Hunter Center.
It was for the admin building at Park Street.
But when we talked, then they said that, that's what we need, did I misunderstand that, because remember, we talked about it, and we said we needed more money for the lighting, and they were specifically letting us know that lighting was not included in that, that we had a certain amount left over from the AWP funding.
That was at the last meeting when we voted, that's what we voted on, the floor, and the remaining money would be going towards the administrative building, like.
I didn't hear it, no mistake, I thought I heard.
That's what I heard before.
That's what I'm saying, we need to hear.
We voted that money to the Mildred Hunter Center, because they talked about, Valdosta closing, Andre talked about it.
That's not what we voted on.
But it's not, that's not, that's not the presentation that was given to us, sir.
Richard, didn't we just, a few years back, we replaced the lighting, I believe, at Mildred Hunter Center with Musco lighting?
Yes.
Which is why we earmarked some of this money left over from replacing the floors to go to the administrative building, because their lighting has not been updated with the Musco lighting.
Correct, that is correct, absolutely. The lighting at Mildred Hunter is about three years old, and so during the allocation to AWP, this total was stated for the amount that went to Mildred Hunter for the floors, and the remaining would be set aside for the lighting at the main office.
Is there a warranty on the lighting at Mildred Hunter Center, because it's just not there, it's just not working, so I'm just asking. You said it was three years ago when we got new lighting at Mildred Hunter Center, right?
Yes, ma'am.
So it's not working, was there a warranty on it, or is anybody trying to check on it? Because there is a request for lighting at Mildred Hunter Center, is reasonable asking me this, and was there a warranty, if we just got it just three years ago?
Ma'am, what I can do is I can check with Parks and Rec, and then we can go from there, you know?
Maybe what we can do, Richard, is when they, because Musco does a lot of work for us, they did the Freedom Park, they did the Miracle League, they did a lot of lighting for us, and they done the soccer complex, so maybe when they're here, maybe they can check to see if the lighting is producing what needs to be needed for what we paid for, you know, maybe, maybe it is a matter of changing out a few bulbs or something.
Well, you know, I agree with that, and I have a question to, since there's such discrepancy that I'm, with me on there, can we, I can make, I would like to make a motion that we table this until we get that straight. I'd like to make a motion that we table it so we get this straight. I would like to table the request for the lighting, for the, for the next meeting, for our next meeting. Second.
In a little bit of a second, then we table this request until our next meeting, all in favor? All opposed? Would it be in a tie? I break the tiebreaker, and we can table it. But we, but I have a question, before we do that, Theresa, do you have a question to ask me?
I'm trying to find my name.
Well, we, it's in our paperwork, we both have.
Because what I'm saying, Mayor Proten, I'm not, I misunderstood, when we did the presentation at the last meeting, when I went in concerning, we do the flowers, and George Kinnear students said in the meeting, funds that they, with the nineteen thousand that we were gonna use to reach building lighting at the Mildred Hunter Center, and that's the reason I was all in hypes of getting this, because we wanted to, uh, Mildred Hunter Center to have lighting, better lighting. Nothing would I have voted for us to do the gymnasium when Parks and Rec get so many funds, but they haven't enough funds to supply these automatically, but that, always taking from the disadvantaged area.
But what I'm saying, this is the menace that we have.
I understand that, sir. That's all I said, sir, I misunderstood it, that was all I said. I didn't disagree, I said I misunderstood it.
And in my game too, I'm just gonna add, because I did talk to them, I said, where else can we get some funding for the help with the rest of the money for the lighting? That's all, and I just wanna clear it up, so we'll have it, yeah, not against, you know, I just wanna clear it up, but let us, can we just have a little more conversation with them about?
Okay, my question is, what, we table it until they come back and do what? That's what I'm asking.
We'll live until the next meeting, that time, I'm just saying, I hope we'll have more time to talk and clear it up, Richard.
Right. The motion's been made and ordered, we have tabled it.
Thank you.
We're gonna move on to the next item, local funding request, consideration for first to purchase two sodium hypochlorate cell assemblies for water treatment. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Proten and Council. This is a consideration of requests to purchase two sodium hypochlorate cell assemblies for the city of Valdosta Water Treatment Plant, the Chlor-Tec on-site hypochlorate. The Chlor-Tec on-site hypochlorite generation system was installed at the water plant in 2007 as part of the plant's upgrade project. The system consists of two hypochlorite generators, a generator sodium hypochlorite disinfection solution. This is added to the city's water for final disinfection and to provide the required disinfection residual in the water distribution system. The main components of each generator are two hypochlorite cell assemblies, which have a five to seven year operational life expectancy. The cell assemblies were replaced for one to two generators approximately in 2017. Due to the age and the current state of the operational wear, there's a lot of, all the iron and stuff gets inside the plates, and you'll see on the last page, we'll put a picture there to be able to see it. Due to that, it just needs to be, this one needs to be replaced, it's basically losing its efficiency, and it loses ability to produce sodium hypochlorite if the cells actually fail. So, this is the NER Water Technologies, is the sole manufacturer of the Chlor-Tec hypochlorite system, and the sole provider for the parts and services. The staff recommends to approve a payment of $186,105.40 for the purchase of the two cell assemblies. I will let you know this week, funding source will come from user fees, actually this is under budget, the total initial cost was $187,000. And I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Any questions, Dennis?
What are the consequences of not changing that?
The consequence of it, if it fails, then we can't produce hypochlorite, which is a 0.8% bleach that we produce at the water plant. If we can't produce that, then it's not gonna be able to take care of our metrological test throughout the city, far as our water supply, and be able to have, make sure people have safe drinking water.
Sounds like a pretty good reason to me.
Any other questions?
So you were saying that we're gonna use the initiation, you were just stating, sir? This is a thousand dollars, I think that's what you said, right?
Yes, correct.
Could we go back there, Ma'am, this chain, please? I think it was $186,000 even?
It was $186,105.40.
All right, sir.
The initial cost was $187,000, when we budgeted for this.
I mean, other question? All right, I'm turning over for action.
Mr. Mayor Porteen, I make a motion to approve this, as presented.
Second. The motion is second, all in favor? Motion carries. Are we gonna, we have a consideration to approve an engineering proposal for phase two of the new water treatment plant.
Yes, sir. Again, Mayor Porteen and Council, this is consideration, a request to approve the engineering proposal for the phase two of the new water treatment plant. This is gonna come from the Georgia AWOP grant, C.M. Smith, consultant assisting the city in 2021 to apply and receive Georgia American Rescue Plan Act funding for a new water treatment plant. In early 2023, phase one, the test well was completed, and the city has required a new property for the project site. Under phase two, the consultant provide professional engineering services for the project to include conception and design, preliminary design, final design, and opinion of probable construction cost, permitting support and assistance during bidding services, engineering services during the construction, and the startup support. This project is the overall alternative water supply program under secured state fiscal recovery funds for phase two across the next 36 months. The project will need to be designed, permitted, and awarded to a general contractor by September 30th, 2023, and completed by October 31st, 2026. I will say, this is, the AWOP funding contains aggressive time schedules and deadlines. If you look at your last few pages, I think it's the next page, actually put a draft project schedule for the water treatment plant number two, and if you can see, with city council approval for engineering services, and once this is approved, hopefully, we can go ahead and notice to proceed and go ahead and get this project started. The staff recommends authorization to approve the proposal submitted by C.M. Smith in the amount of $2,030,960, and I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Any question?
Just a location again, sir, is this the water plant will be on the opposite side of the airport, sir?
Yes, ma'am, it will be.
Thank you, sir.
This will be able to give us better, be able to loop the system, give us better water quality off route, we're very excited of this project.
Also, if any business come in and that area, they can connect to our water system. Thank you, sir.
And that will be able to help our existing water plant on the north side of town to be able to have, be able to, instead of running nine or 10 million, 11 million during the summer, be able to basically go to six or seven, and we have this one online to be able to help, so that'll help that as well.
Any other questions? Turn it over to council back.
Mr. Mayor Porteen, I'd like to make a motion to accept the proposal for phase two of the treatment plant.
Second, sir.
The motion is second, all in favor?
Thank you.
Next, we have a consideration for a request for Sunday voting dates for the city of Valdosta municipal elections 2023. Attorney, so the city manager, Richard Harding?
Yes, sir. The city of Valdosta has contracted with the Lounge County Board of Elections for the 2023 municipal election, which will be held on Tuesday, November 7th, 2023. I have received several requests from various organizations in our community requesting that the city add two Sundays during the advanced early voting period. The two days will be Sunday, October 22nd, 2023, and Sunday, October 29th, 2023. Our city attorney reviewed the applicable law, which provides as follows. If the register or absentee ballot clerk so chooses the second Sunday, the third Sunday, or both, the second and third Sunday is prior to a primary or election during hours determined by the register, absentee or the absentee ballot clerk, but no longer than 7:00 a.m. through 7:00 p.m. The register of the Lounge County Board of Elections was contacted about the possibility of adding the two days for Sunday voting. After checking the legalities and dates for advertisement, those dates were deemed good. The hours of Sunday voting would be from 12:00 p.m. to 5:00 p.m. at the Lounge County Board of Elections office. There are four options that are on the table. Option one, approve the two Sunday voting dates of October 22nd, 2023, and October 29th, 2023. Approve one Sunday voting date of October 22nd. Approve one Sunday, one Sunday voting date of October 29th, and the fourth, do not approve any Sunday voting dates.
Counsel, ask any questions? Any question?
I mean, I'd just like to just, you know, as we discussed this before, you know, many times, I'd just like to clear out that, you know, we keep in mind that we have, right at this moment, we have 17 days of early voting. Two of them are on Saturdays. The last week, which is, ends on November 3rd, which is basically four days before we vote the final day, that whole week is from 7:00 to 7:00. So that whole week's 12-hour days. So I'm, I'm just trying to wonder, I'm just wondering, you know, is it necessary to have a Sunday vote when we have so much time and days available to already early vote, and extending the last week from 8:00 to 5:00 to 7:00 to 7:00? You know, is it, is it really necessary to, to throw in a five-hour day on a Sunday? Because I know some of the things where, you know, folks can't get to work, or they can't get off in time, or they, you know, there's no way they can, you know, people work 10-hour days, or wherever the case may be, which is why that last week, they have 12-hour days, and also we throw in two Saturdays as well. I'm just throwing that out there, I just.
Any other questions, any other coming? Is council's for action?
Mr. Mayor Porteen, if the council allow, hopefully they can choose one date, October 22nd, from 12:00 to 5:00 p.m.
Is there, is that a form of a motion?
Yes, sir, I'd like to make a motion that we choose October 22nd, that Sunday, from 12:00 to 5:00 p.m.
Is the motion that we approve October 22nd? Is there a second? Second. The motion is second that we approve October 22nd, 2023. All in favor? All opposed? As carries. So we have October 22nd, 2023. Next portion of our meeting, we're gonna move on to citizens to be heard. Like to ask that you not engage any individual council member in discussion, and is our rule that we will get back with them, get back with you at the end of the meeting if we can, we'd like to ask that you keep it down to three minutes. With that being said, we have any, citizens to be heard? All right, we're gonna move on to our city managers' report?
Yes, Mayor Porteen, what's a lot going on in the city next couple of weeks, on, from October, from August 29th to October 24th, every Tuesday, the Citizens Fire Academy will take place at the Valdosta Fire Department Training Facility from 6:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. September the first, it's on a Friday, our first Friday after 5:00, 5:00 p.m. downtown Valdosta. September the eighth, Friday at 9:00 a.m., we will have our Doors to Freedom unveiling outside of City Hall. Our invitations are going out, the community is definitely invited. September the ninth, Saturday, our annual 9/11 5K downtown Valdosta, 7:00 to 8:00 a.m. the registration starts. Put on your running gear, your running shoes, shoes, and come out and, and celebrate this occasion. September 11th, Monday, 9:00 a.m., our 9/11 Memorial Ceremony with the county, it will take place at the historic Lounge County Courthouse. September 14th through November 2nd, the police will not be outdone by the fire department, they will have their citizen police academy. This will take place every Thursday, 6:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. at the police department. The last item on the list is September 20th, Friday from 6:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m., VSU Family Fun Night at Unity Park, we'll have bands, food trucks, a lot of music, good times, and welcome our VSU families and friends to Valdosta. That's all I have.
All right, city manager report is done, we have any council comments?
Just want to say you done a great job as being the mayor today.
Thank you, ma'am.
Any other, come in?
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
All in favor? Meeting's adjourned.